Alright, Islam family. Um, work for the UK, anything coming on site, if you come on site. For China, come on site, just give me that. Um, for everybody who can be on the UK, Islam. Um, and listen to, well, this is a general membership, Moorish Science Temple of America, Canaanland side, okay? So this is your meeting, we're here to facilitate and to just get started, get it off of the bucket, right? This is your, your meetings, yeah, so that's the first thing that I just wanted you to know. Um, if you don't know me, I'm Ted about Sarbay, I'm chairman, um, Moorish Science Temple of America. Right, as Moors, it's I sign, I self law, I have a message, okay? Your, your nation, your society, your, okay, the temple is a school to teach Moors what? Their birthright and nationality rights. So, um, I give my introduction in brief, um, as a chairman, I'm here in a meeting to share the meeting, to witness for the board and for the general world at large to what you as a society decide, right? And vice versa, um, witness to you and ask what goes on in the add-on chamber meetings and decisions that are made in the council, i.e. So, in that being said, um, we'll open this meeting with prayer. Prayer.
Allah the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Allah the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Allah the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Allah the protector.
Allah the guardian.
And my salvation.
And my salvation.
And my day.
And my day.
The Holy Prophet.
The Holy Prophet.
Noobu Jirabi.
Noobu Jirabi.
It's Allah.
Alright, so, I'll just let everybody introduce themselves. Um, Nari, or whatever. Please, Islam. Well, first off, I'd like to give honors to Nobu Jirabi, give honors to Empress Kadija Gaston Elde, uh, who has performed, uh, last solstice, which was last year. Also like to give honors to Moors Sarbay. As, uh, as Brother Ted mentioned, I'm Nari Sifwi Elde, uh, manifested in the, the Atlantis Islands, um, the Amurga in Central America, Northwest of Exum, Magret Alwaxa, the Rock of the Ghost Father's East. Um, myself, I am secretary for the Moorish Science Temple of America, Number Five, in Canaanland, in the Northwest Territory. Um, as secretary, um, my duties are fast. I was gonna basically give point forms for most of them, but I would very much like to speak on them, like, more in detail, not too much, but you could ask me questions after about it. Uh, but before I do that, I'm gonna do, say on a couple of statements from Nobu Jirabi in regards to my position as secretary and how important to this. Um, first statement is, in the 1920s, Nobu Jirabi had said that, "The membership is going to dwindle down to a handful. But keep the doors open, and I will drive the Asiatics in." The Holy Prophet said, "When I drive the Asiatics in, it's going to take ten secretaries just to write down the names." Now, when he said that, I didn't overstand the magnitude of exactly what he was saying until the past, uh, month and a half, when, um, Brother Cujo had put the word out of people all over North America to join Moorish Science Temple America in Canaanland, and like, my phone's been going off, like, breaking off the hook, my email's been hacked all the time, so a whole bunch of people have been literally asking to become members of the Moorish Science, the Number Five up here. So that's part of my, my duties as a secretary has been, as I said, has been fast. And I, I'm, I had to find an assistant, which my Empress is helping me out with that right now. Another statement that Nobu Jirabi had mentioned was, "I'm going to leave the Europeans here just long enough to teach you how to run a government." And that is what we are doing right now. Europeans are long enough to show us what to do as a government. We taught them, now we're taking it back and doing it for ourselves, and now we have, we've solidified what we need to do to get started. Now, I'm gonna be reading from the Holy Quran, before I get to my duties, I'm, I'm leading up to it because I need to signify the importance of what Nobu Jirabi left for us, for us to move forward, because if we don't put Nobu Jirabi first, whatever we do is gonna be null and void, Islam, alright? So now, I'm gonna read chapter 25. It's not a long chapter, but it's very significant in what my duties are. It's, uh, chapter 25, "A Holy Covenant of the Asiatic Nation." It basically says, "Ye are the children of one father, provided by his care and the breast of one mother hath given you suck. Let the bonds of affection therefore unite thee with thy brothers, and that peace and happiness may dwell in thy father's house. And when ye separate in the world, remember the relation that bindeth you to love and unity, and to furt not a stranger before thy own blood. If thy brother is in adversity, assist him; if thy sister is in trouble, forsake her not. So shall the fortunes of thy father contribute to the support of his whole race, and his care be continued to you all in your love to each other." Now, I speak on that chapter because, as I said, in regards to what we have to do moving forward, especially as a government, is we have to be there for you. You have issues, you speak to us, and we have things to say, we speak to you, we're there to go apart, and for anything happens. Now, I'm gonna go to my administrative functions, and as I said, it's, it's long, so bear with me. Um, okay, if every member, so basically, it's, it's in the administrative functions book, uh, we have some copies on the table over there, if you don't have them already, but I'm gonna read out my duties. "If every member of the Grand Sheets for Grand Sheikhis staff was so humble, it would only be his or her secretary, for it takes a very special and honorable member to execute the proceedings of the Grand Sheet for Grand Sheikhis. To execute his or her rules and to call to remembrance events that are almost clear out of his or her thoughts. We are talking about a member who is diligent, dedicated, and truly Moorish duty, conscious, for he or she knows that the words referred by the secretary is truly vital, valuable, and appreciated, for in the secretary great trust of the people resides." So first, I, so secretary, the rest of them, is the record keeper of all proceedings of the Moorish Society, and he or she shall have the file information on all members of the Moorish Society. All Moorish documents are written by the secretary by virtue of the delegated authority of that office. The secretary is also the keeper of the great seals of our Moorish Society, and holds the duty of recording all finances and financial records. The secretary, from his own files, can give the numbers of our members, recommendations, no suspensions, expulsions, and delinquent members under our active list for those who have passed form. The secretary shall always be prepared to give the records of property on its inventory at a day's notice. The secretary may have assistant secretaries, they shall be appointed by the Grand Sheet for Grand Sheikhis. The secretary shall, upon request for application for membership into the Moorish Science Temple, point out to the applicant the various funds and dues required to be paid. The funds are for the processing and nationalization, etc. The dues are for upkeep of the organization. The secretary is to conduct all written correspondence. The secretary is to open and close our meetings with the readings of the laws, for this duty is entrusted to this trusted scribe. The secretary or treasurer shall not disclose any personal information of any member to any other member, etc. A member's personal business, participation, or dues, etc., is only a matter of the Round Table and the Grand Sheet, Grand Sheikhis, Assistant Grand Sheet, Assistant Grand Sheikhis, and the Chairman or Chairwoman. Among the secretary's records, under his overcare, shall be a calendar of appointments for the Grand Sheet's table and a Moorish calendar of upcoming events and occasions. The filed records of each member shall contain registration application, second heaven applications, letters, certificates, and any, all documents, or affidavits, etc. That number must, that number is not entered into their files. The record book of all natural persons who have been nationalized with clearly reported dates, the record book of all members and those passed, raised and initiated into the second heaven with dates, the record book of all candidates, sheets, assistant grand sheets, associate ministers, ministers, chairman or chairwoman, etc. Files shall be kept noted in every government official that we make contact. Very important. The secretary shall communicate clearly all matters of concern at the time of concern to officials of our Moorish Society or to the Round Table. The secretary will file all motions by members of the Round Table because all documents, certificates, etc., are official documents and must be treated as such. If one has an idea or perception to make and if it is not written, the proof is on you to prove it is so, otherwise it is forgotten and/or rejected. The secretary will style all meeting periods, second heaven, as chamber sessions and number those sessions, one, two, three, etc. Example, chamber session one, date and issue, etc. From time to time, secretary will be, by permission of the Grand Sheet, Grand Sheikhis or Round Table, counsel, publish the minutes of the Round Table. Those minutes that pertain to issues passed into law will read, "All laws enacted by the Round Table," etc., be it therefore resolved. Moorish Public Law Number 101, etc., etc. Otherwise, the minutes are to be sealed up and must not be read, nor must the seal be broken. The secretary will withdraw finance out of the treasury as needed to do Moorish missionary work, assure that all burdens does not fall on the members doing or carrying out the Moorish missionary work. The secretary will be responsible for and will secure all applications, etc., temple property, temple property. Applicants will file, fill out an application in the temple. The secretary will carry the tax exempt number of the temple and will purchase all products acquired from the temple in the name of the temple. The secretary of whom will open any mail addressed to the temple, this does not apply to ministers. The secretary is a business officer and his or her duties are very extensive, therein does not contain a full summary of the duties, which means is, the secretary is the clerk of the House of Allah, he or she presides at all meetings. The secretary shall post to be issued to every nationalized member upon nationalization, reclamation of the following Moorish materials: Articles of Religion, which includes the Circle Seven, the Divine Constitution and Bible laws, Supreme Law of the Land, which is the Constitution, Nationality card, Deuce card, Emergency Front card, Citizenship Affirmation records, Temple functions. The correspondent secretary shall keep records of attendance at all meetings, coordinate activities to contact outside Moors and natural persons, as well as national, state, and local government agencies with the assistance of the recording secretary. So, I take a breath, um, more or less, as secretary, from what I've just read, nothing starts without my signature, and it doesn't end without my signature. So what goes on in and around North Exum, not necessarily has to go through me, but I am responsible for all the members within this nation, and that is the magnitude of the duties of the secretary have, and I've taken that on with honors from the Round Table and from the Adets, they've entrusted that with me to get, accomplish what we need to accomplish, and what we need to accomplish is for the nation to rise again. I leave as I came, with love and blessings. Thank you. Alright, um, the next, the, uh, the next official to speak, um, let's go this way, yeah, Camre.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Camre. Um, I am the head of the Law Department and Health Department. Uh, my duty is to give advice to anybody who needs help in the law sector, if they're having any problems or going through any court cases, whether it's, um, there's court everywhere, whether it's schools, court systems, medical, I will, I, I have to, um, help you out, guide you, uh, show you the right place of work that you are to, Nari, to get motorized or be sealed, um, come with you. I have a couple of other Moors that come with me on a daily, weekly basis to all courts in Toronto, Canada, including Hamilton. Um, we, uh, we try to, my duty is to get you to overstand or understand, if you know what I'm saying, what the system is really going, or how the system is playing. Um, as you know, the court system is called court for a reason, because it's actually an actual game, you play in the court system. My duty is to help, teach everybody, everybody who is brave, what the situation is. Um, we also deal with the health aspect, um, I have my brother over here, uh, Shakem, uh, he does, uh, he helps, he, uh, do the exercising stuff, so if you need to trim up or slim up or get yourself, you know, motivated, strong for the summertime, you can talk to Shakem about training with him, he's a great trainer. Brother Shakem, stand up for me. You've been doing Mahita for many, many years, so I'm, I'm pretty sure you can get the best of it out, you see how big he really is right now, you're, you're really good. Um, uh, in the future, we are planning, I'm thinking a clinic, but, um, we need to, if you guys, if anybody out there knows any registered nurses, doctors that want to build their own, like, clinic setting, um, please contact me, absolutely, Ken. Uh, we do need to help as much as possible, because, you know, already, there's a lot of sick people out there, and the hospitals are not taking anything proper, they're not suggesting nothing, and they're the real drug dealers, okay? There's all these synthetic drugs that they're selling, or fentanyl, are real, real, real harmful, and they have a lot of side effects, and they do not solve your problem. So, for our people to be healthy and wise to get to our destination as a self-convict, we need to have our minds right, we need to have our bodies right, and we need to have our, our strength, all the way up, all the way up. Um, I don't know what much to say, but, um, I just, well, I just hope that, uh, as are the people here, will come into, uh, consciousness, will understand this word and how it's been playing us for a long time, playing us for a long time, and it's now for us to wake up and push on with all the others and get there. So, I hope you are all here to understand that and help my people, my friends here, uh, of the Moorish Temple, um, Number Five, to achieve our goals, alright? Thank you.
Alright, Camre, um, I want to take this moment while I, uh, just, we told Sister Amira, okay? You can stand up, and, uh, Sister Amira will be delivering classes this summer, uh, and perhaps hopefully on, yeah. Probably, yeah. When we, yeah, so we'll, we'll get back to that. Um, and so, uh, the next official, Grand Sheet.
Me here. Sorry. Hold on. Alright, so, I take upon myself, I'm Moors Riffelde, and I take upon myself to start a ministry of religion and Quran studies, and through my involvement in this, something spoke to me about the spirit, or the unseen, or the connecting with, um, the past, the spirits from, from our past, and, um, one of the, uh, let's see, one of the, I guess, definitions of religion is re-regime, which is reconnecting with the past. So, I take it, what I've seen in this movement is a lot of, um, focus on, I think, the physical, and what I've sensed is that what we are all missing is the spiritual, and the connecting and the manifesting of the power within, but what I've sensed is that we are always looking for some kind of validation or answer from them, where it's really us who's creating everything, but we have now continued to be looking for them to answer something for us, and really what we have to do is to empower ourselves and find ourselves when everything comes. So, I call it the Ministry of Religion and Quran Studies, and I'm gonna lead the, um, chapter on religion, and I'm gonna connect that, because one of the things that I found was that, and I think we've talked about this in certain other lectures, was that, um, our connection is to astrology and astronomy, and that connection with the universe, the verse. So, at the end of the, of the chapter religion, I will connect, um, the parts that I think connect with, with astrology, and then speak on the fact that this ministry is just beginning, but what I've sensed is that the Prophet held up the Quran, and he held up a one-on-one questionnaire and said, "This was the, these two booklets were the answers for us." So I think that when you see, and when we, when all of us think back to our classes, how much time we've spent breaking, breaking those two documents down and actually overstanding exactly what's going on, word by word, meanings, inference, and all of that stuff. And so that's where, on my Saturday classes, we've been connecting and setting off, but part of that is just sort of to get things going, but ultimately, what I want us to do is that Quran should all, that should, you know what I mean, that should be all in our back, and we should know that, like, that should be, that should be ours, and instead it's something that, you know, what chapter is this, what chapter is that, we have that issue. So anyways, I'm gonna read the chapter, and then I'm gonna connect it with astrology and show you that what I think was really going on with this was that this was, this was a guide, we all knew that, the first chapter talks about the creation of man, and then through all our instructions that I think on the physical plane, was then a bit of spiritual sort of keys. So I'm gonna read the, um, the holding instructions from the Prophet, religion. "There is but one Allah, author, creator, and governor of the world, Almighty, eternal, and incomprehensible. The Son is not Allah, but His normalcy in me. He enlightened, He enlightened the world with His brightness. He has one, give life to the products of the earth. Mire him as the creature, instrument of Allah, worship Him not. To the One who is supreme, most magnificent, and to Him alone for all worship, adoration, thanks giving, and praise. Who hath stretched the court of the heavens with His hands, who hath stretched with His finger the course of the stars, who set it bounds to the ocean that it cannot pass, and saith unto the stormy winds, 'Be still.' He shakes the earth, and the nations turn. He dared His likenies, which are dismayed. He calls forth of worlds by the words of His mouth. He smites them with His words, when they sink to nothing. Oh, reverence the majesty of the All-Indemn, um, potent, and tempt not His anger, lest thou be destroyed. The providence of Allah is ever, all His works. He ruled and direct, and directed with infinite wisdom. He hath instituted laws in the government of the world. He hath wonderfully varied them in all beings, and each by His nature in forms to His will. Through the depth of His mind He revolved all muller, and secret and purity lie open before Him. The thoughts of My heart are naked to His view. He knoweth by determination of where they are made. With respect to His pieces, there is nothing contingent. With respect to His providence, there is nothing accidental. Wonderful he is in all His ways. His councils are instrutor, the manner of His knowledge transcended by conception. Pay therefore praise to His wisdom, all honor and veneration bow down thyself in humble as immeasurable obedience in His supreme direction." Just scratch the start. "The Father is gracious and beneficent. He hath created the world in mercy and love. His creatures of His hand declare His goodness, and they enjoy His speak of His praise. He hold them with beauty, He supported them with food, He preserved them with pleasure, from generation to generation. If we lift up our eyes to the heaven, His glory shines forth. If we cast them down on earth, it is full of His goodness. The hills and the valleys rejoice and sing, fields and rivers and woods resound His praise." And this is some of the stuff that sometimes when I walk out there, you're in nature, you feel it, but there is something there, you know what I mean, and when we're in the city, that has been part of the process, I don't understand how layered all of this stuff is, um, anyway, so, um, but things He have to, oh, okay, so, okay, so, look at that. "His words and words resound His praise, but thee He have to stand with, peer to favor, exalted by station above all creatures. He hath subdued thee with reason to maintain thy doth dominion. He hath fitted thee with language, improved by society, and exalted thy mind with the powers of meditation, contemplated, and adored as immeasurable perfection. And in the laws He hath ordained as the rule of life, so kindly hath He united thy duty to thy nature, that leads to His precepts, His happiness to thyself. Oh, praise His goodness with songs of thanksgiving, and meditate in silence on your wonders of His love. Let thy heart overflow gratitude and acknowledging. Let the language of thy lips speak praise and adoration, and let the actions of thy life show thy love to His law. Allah is just and righteous, and will judge the earth with equity and truth. Hath He established His laws of goodness and mercy, and shall He not punish the transgressors thereof? Oh, think not bold men, because thy punishment is delayed, that the arm of Allah is wicked. Even flatter thyself with the hopes that He will get that I do things." That phrase right there scares me. Every time I move, I think that maybe I'm okay, things are alright, but I'm always second guessing myself as to how this is gonna look when I get looked back upon. Okay, sorry, um, "His eyes perceive the, thy secrets, His eye perceive the secrets of every heart, and He remembers them forever. He respects it not the person, or the stations, or men. The high and the low, the rich and the poor, the wise and the ignorant, when the soul hath shaken off the cummerous shackles of this mortal life, shall equally receive from senses of just and everlasting retribution according to their voices." So that's the other part that says to me that this stuff that we hear is only just like the, is like the, I don't know, what would the word be, it's just the, this is just the appetizer to the real meal, right? So we've got to prepare ourselves properly to be hitting. "Then shall the wicked tremble and be dethroned, but a part of the righteous shall rejoice in His judgments," and that part gives me joy, because I think as long as I'm righteous, everything's gonna be alright. "Oh, fear Allah, for all the days of thy life have walked into the past, which He hath opened before thee, that prove," now, this is the part that I'm gonna connect, "that proves and monitors, that proves..." Let prudence admonish, let prudence admonish thee, let temperance restrain thee, let justice guide thy hand, benevolence warn thy heart, and gratitude to heaven inspire thee with devotion. These shall give the happiness in thy present state, and bring thee to the mansion of eternal felicity in the paradise of Allah." This is the true economy of human life. So, when we all sit there and we're thinking about all this stuff with money and all that stuff, we're off. You've got to get back on point, and money and all that stuff will come. So, my last part, when I was reading off, um, the points, "Let prudence admonish, let temperance restrain", there's a section here which is the, um, what is the one on the child? I think it's the, um, sorry? The duties of the, the whole instructions to the duty of the child. Well, anyways, there's a breakdown there, which, as we've done the understanding, we realized relates to astrology. So, when I did the, when I did the knowledge on that last, uh, state, on that last sentence there, what I realized was there was an instruction to me to tie this into astrology. And the instruction was, this is in my notes because I carry a notebook around, and everyone I teach almost have notes. But when you have thoughts, because what I find sometimes is you'll have a thought. And that thought could literally change the world within a couple of days anyway. What the hell was that going to happen to you? So, you should always be writing this stuff down because you don't know how it applies. So, anyways, what I did was I found this one, or at least that passage, and what I realized was that this, this little booklet here was, this is not even an encyclopedia, this is like a mainframe computer full of the knowledge for us. So, anyways, prudence stands for fortune, which is the astrological sign of the real. Temperance stands for health, which is the astrological sign of Virgo. Justice stands for honor, which is the astrological sign of Leo. Gratitude stands for benefit, which is the astrological sign of Gemini. Benevolence stands for exalted mind, which is the astrological sign of Capricorn. So, what I realized is that through this, and this is what spoke to me about opening up a ministry that connects us figuring this out, like, some of the other passages in there talks about Jesus walking up the 12-step ladder. Well, if we understand that, that 12-step ladder is really the Zodiac, which is really the astrological sign. So, really what Zodiac is, what Jesus showed up, is really doing was he was working all of the stations, right? And within, what he turned to religion, he's saying that these five points, uh, prudence, temperance, and justice, these are the things that we need to focus on for human economy, not money, not whatever. So, when these things came clear to me, and they came clear to me by continuing to read the Quran, I overstood that. I was stuck in here, but I had to keep studying. So, that is what the ministry I opened up. I think that is the way the answer, that is the other side to the national side, which is the divine side, which is really natural, nature is natural. To me, I see that being the spirit or the higher self, which I think we end up overlooking because of what the colonizers have done to us, keeping us put down. Alright? I'll step into one last thing, I'll move on, which was the, um... And this was the other part, and these are the things that I've been deciding to want to focus on in my ministry. So, this is chapter 10, reading of the sin-saviors who make laws for the coming age for the nations of the earth. And I'm just going to skip to the passage where I want. And it says that one of the sages said, "And we must formulate the notions of the empire of the soul, which rests on seven." If you understand what seven is, seven are the days, right? "In each sage in turn shall formulate apostle, apostle, and these shall be the basis of the queens of men until the perfect age shall come." Then Justin wrote first, "All things are thought, all length is thought activity." So, when we see that there's a difference or separation that's wrong, so what are we really doing? What are we really moving towards? Is it money? Is it this stuff from the European or humanity the greater, right? And then the second, uh, the multiple beings are the phases of the one great thought, the manifest goal. Allah is thought, thought is Allah. And then it goes on, and it says that we are, man is a thought of Allah. So, Allah is thought, and thought is Allah, and we are thought of Allah, then we must be part of Allah. But we're concerned with money and all this other crap. We're really missing the point. So, that is where my ministry, I want to delve into these books and get, and get to the real part of the matter so that we can transcend and become the beings of light that we are, not caught up in this bullshit of the colonizers and the other self. That's it.
Alright, so I'm thanking Brother Omar, um, so I don't want to mention on this cap, uh, Saturdays. See Brother Omar at the temple to facilitate classes?
So, yeah, what it was, it was supposed to be every first and third Saturdays, I was connecting with Sebnera, laying down in there and sort of wanting to put a connection in with our brother's daily stuff. That was part of it.
I mean, it's basically, I mean, just only about to explain that, it's like, if you do not receive any emails for classes on Saturday, there's no classes on Saturday.
And that sometimes just happens. What's happened was, Sebnera had his national ceremony last week, so we, so basically, this was a five-week, this was a five-week month. Technically, every other week should be me. But what he tells me is he's only holding them on the first and third. So, then ultimately, then the fifth month, he wasn't there, but he had his national ceremony, ceremony on the fourth. He was missing the fifth, wanted to go back to the fourth, to the first again, which would have been this week coming up. But then, um, our brother Tezba was doing second and fourth Saturdays. So, right now, I'm in discussion with Sebnera again about trying to keep this every other Saturday so that we have a continuity there. But he really wants to switch, which I think is unfair to us to keep sort of jumping around every time the dates. So, we're going to get to the bottom of that, um, because what I said to him is come September again, the dates match back up again with being the first and third Saturdays. So, can he not alter a bit? Because if we're feeding off of him, we're together, then we should be able to work together. So, that's where things have been a little bit mixed up, because if you look at the calendar receipt, this was a five-week month, and then he, oh, and because next week, what he's supposed to be doing, he's now having a, um, what do you call it, a tour down to Washington DC. So, he's not even planning to, or Washington DC is having an outside tour. So, we're not even having, uh, that Skype lecture. But ultimately, what I want to do is I want our Saturdays to be for us with this Quran work. But ultimately, when I looked at some of this stuff, I felt overwhelmed by, by just, you know, you just open it up and you start looking, and you start realizing this stuff is crazy. You know what I mean? So, for me to come to you, teaching you, I got to be on a certain level. And I've sort of felt, I'm not there, so that's been part of it. And I've got to do that with them, the slaves and the colonizers and all that stuff, and doing all that stuff that's in there. So, anyways, that's...
Basically, like Omar was saying, if you don't get an email, there won't be a class. But, um, we're going to try and be there as tolerant as possible. And like you said, it'll be out of this class, with Sebnera, myself, who already discussed history, um, law, and rules. Second book is updated, can't separate you too, right? Um, just a quick note, you may have noticed Brother Akil Bay coming up. He started with seven, that's divine. Like you said, that's the combination of soul. And beyond that, it's eight, that's infinity. And nine is completion, and you go beyond that, it's just like a little riddle. And so, because we are that eternal, morish being, that Moat, right? This never dies, this never ends, right? It had no beginning. Your soul has no beginning, has no end. So, Islam, so whatever, you, you have been called to step up. Let it be known, and it'll be a seat for you to take a position or to come into a ministry to assist someone, right, as an assistant, et cetera, right? That's, that's on you. Okay, this is not a, you know, exclusive club or anything like that, okay? So, with that said, uh, the next speaker, Brother Eru.
Hello, Marsham, I'm Eru. Hi, I'm Eru Akil Bay, and I have a few responsibilities under the head of council. Uh, the first of which is as Minister of Land Transport and Aviation. It was a very popular topic unless emails are done. I know that traveling freely on the roads, people want to be, uh, roadblocks that people face often, it's a funny. And I've been working on a mission project to resolve some of these problems. And so, I'm being responsible for organizing classes and getting our nationals and members ready to travel on the road, whether it's really simultaneously a religious, an indigenous, and a foreign jurisdiction. And also responsible for facilitating, obviously, our travel, travel space. I'm a traveler, and also human insurance for foreign policy, for insurance people from other states. For example, specifically, people require any corporate license and their driver's license, something like that. So, in the meantime, right now, we're not part of any ministry, I know everybody's asking questions. We're reassumed, and once a day, just putting emails to everybody, and then we'll all be able to, uh, to take part in that. We've got a set of classes that we've organized, um, to help people get prepared to receive a place and take on the responsibility of traveling on the road. Uh, you guys ask a question about, I don't want to take all your time. During the year, may you ask questions about how the constantly organized, how you guys get the responsibility and get your sets and IDs as insurance when it's ready. Also, that's another, uh, responsibility, which is Minister of Ancestral Initiation and Ritual. Basically, what I'll be helping to do is to bring back a form of ritual or religion that our ancestors used to use, which deals with specifically taking our covenant and transforming that into a spiritual molecule, one as TNT. And, um, it's something that our ancestors used to use to leave the physical body, receive information in spiritual realm, bring it back here. So, part of my responsibilities would be to help organize that. I've got a great master teacher, his name is Kalindi Aye, I'm sure you've heard of him. But he travels through South America and Sahara Africa, South Africa, collecting various L C S socials and TNT. And he'll be working with us to bring that stuff back into our, to a full, to a very important political culture that has been lost for a long time. And all of us have access to, our ancestors have access to, to build the emphasis that they did to be who they were. One of the mentions is also, uh, Brother Mori, they mentioned, um, the pastor of Hurriachi, Turner Vasanobe, who was the previous Washington Empress. His mother, and she passed away last year, but there's been a new Empress, and her grandad has been appointed as new Empress. And there's a convention coming out of this month, um, June 18th, December 1st. Anybody who wants to come and meet new Empress and, uh, and part of the inauguration ceremony is more than welcome to. Uh, please contact me with Brother Mori or, um, just my email myself, I can get you guys set up for that. But I've been appointed the Washington Ambassador to Canada as well, um, for when she takes the throne. So, my duties in regards to dealing with, um, Canada and England and all sorts of stuff will be relayed to me in more detail, but I do go down to a convention in, uh, the end of this month. And right now, it's, we're still the one thing here for the temple. But, um, my job with the Washington would be to help open up, um, our own land and to ensure our own projects, whether it be building construction, um, for hospitals or schools or whatever it is you want to build, institutions. We'll have our land, we'll have insurance to be able to do those things, uh, for ourselves and our children. So, again, I'm not entirely sure of the timeline for this is going to be happening. I do want to be going down with the duty to get specific details on that. And once I have them, I'll be able to come back and give you guys details about, uh, how to help establish those, those projects.
Thank you, Brother Eru. So, a quick note, when the, uh, just to facilitate things, I suggest with a question, a question and answer time comment. If you, I'll just take on all the questions, the general questions, and, um, whatever, whatever it makes sense to ask, to, to, to ever them to, or answer them if I can answer. And if you have a specific question for somebody, just when you raise your hand, just let it be known who you, who you'd like to speak to. And, uh, I forget what, I'll get back to that. I'll introduce the next speaker.
Sure. Peace, no tear. Najwa Alde, Mufti, and Security of Martial Arts Temple of America's fourth and number five.
And everybody that... Yeah, every, every general member should be meeting. Uh, Najwa or somebody appointed should be, should be there, so this does not mean this, this, or this and security as well. Okay?
Really, you are the enforcer of the law.
Right, right.
So, I was appointed Mufti by Security Secretary of Law, Grand Sheik Kujewell. I have a background in Thai boxing, uh, wing chomp. So, I basically am a guest in the martial arts. What I really wanted to say here, I didn't really want to say too much, but hearing these men talk, I wanted you to get to know where I stand. I have, uh, certain members coming, and, um, unlike, uh, Mufti, that basically has his own martial arts classes and whatnot. What I try to do is I try to encourage them to take it upon yourself to exercise, jog, and train your own selves, right? Um, I'm not really interested in conducting classes on how to train yourselves, what to do when this situation comes. That's all for you. In this journey as a martial artist, my past, I got into a lot of trouble. What I learned about stepping into the martial arts world is that the best way, the best form of fighting is not fighting. Okay? So, like, I have this individual over here, and, uh, when you step into the martial arts, the Science Temple of America, you got a whole bunch of questions and whatnot. But I advise him to do it. Learn what law is, that's just going to help you out more support. It's that, uh, everybody's own God, his own man right here. I'm my own man. I like to party, I love women, I... Right? So, I'm not here to, um, put on a show for anybody. And, um, nobody's hiring anybody, right? Some of my duties are, if you have any issues or problems with a next member, you come to me, um, put this on notice. And what I try to do is I keep the peace. So, if there's a problem to this individual, this individual, I try to, you know, um, something that escalates. This is what I'm proposing, actually, to manage a situation or whatnot before you, and, uh...
I just want to surround though, I think that it's not that you try, that's really what he's here for. In, in the moving course of this becoming what it is, you know, even as a so-called police, let's say, that's what he represents, presents. He's a person that any issues, you need to come through him, you saw that. Man to man at the back.
Right.
Comes to him.
And, uh, everything should be resolved in a peaceful manner, that's what I'm here for. Not here to be anybody's bully, I'm not here to bully anybody. I just want everything to work in a, in a peaceful manner, that's it. So, you can come talk to me, I'm not here to intimidate you. If you have an issue, like I said, like, talk it out. If you feel that, you can talk it out with the next person, you know, on a personal level, one way or another. That's mainly, it's nothing big, nothing, nothing crazy, just if there's any issues, come to me. And we can, uh, keep it resolved. That's it.
I remembered, uh, what I wanted to ask you guys. Guys, show a hand, how many people have this? Pardon me, should we see people? How many people, show a hand one more time? Most, but not all, okay? How many people have read through it? Show a hand, real high. For real, for real? Alright, so, if we go through, uh, a driveway, um, how? Who's good with that? Who's ready? So, if we, if we, if we vote, if we make some, some actions today, we actually vote today, we get action in our own society starting today, who's ready? Alright. I'm, show a hand. Okay. So, for instance, with the, uh, the program for the summer, we'll vote on that because the temple space is their space. And if they really don't want you in the program, we can't really let them, right? Of course, that's ridiculous, but, right, that's a republican form of government, right? An Islamic form of government, right? An Islamic form of government, right? So, that being said, our Islamic, oh, Brother Akia Albe, do you have anything to say?
Brother Akia Albe, I give admiration to all the gentlemen sitting up here, Maori especially, camera. I'm new to the movement, I don't have the experience that most of these gentlemen here do have. When I did come into the movement, there was a situation where that team was trying to have the meetings again. I had some concerns, and I showed up and, you know, asked them if it was okay, and they invited me in to be a part of it here. I could not take a host or a position based on the fact that obviously the knowledge and the experience is not there. Since that time until today, it's a holy ballgame, it's, it's, I don't know how to put it into words, but I've experienced a lot, learned a lot, gained a lot of knowledge, still learning, it's just, it's a lot more than I could imagine, a lot more. And it's not only that, I'm sitting at a book, reading stuff, I'm going through some experiences right now. Hopefully one day I could share with you guys, and, you know, from a perspective of just put the knowledge out there, just give you the experience, so maybe, just to build on it, basically. So, that being said, you know, I give my admiration to all the government, and anybody else that wants to talk to me about some law stuff, I'll give them experience there, and I'm ready to do anything towards conversation, so that's pretty much it for now.
Alright, speaking of, speaking of law, as a temple, we have our own laws, right? And we have a constitution of bylaws for the Morish Science Temple of America, the original body, like the entire temple that Nobu Jawadi set up, incorporates our temple and many other temples from all around the country. Okay? So, that constitution of bylaw has to follow, and within that, within that, but that framework, that framework, we are obliged by the prophet to create our own bylaws within our region. So in Caymanland, we have to have our own bylaws that are particular to us, right? The customs developed by you. However, up till this time, to run the temple, right, specifically, we've come up with a small number of specific bylaws to govern ourselves, the attitude, and interactions with the general membership. Nothing major, we just have to formulate that and put you on notice, right? And we'll do that as soon as possible. In the meantime, like we said, we want to get active, get as many people active as possible, and the way we do that is by you all come together, voting on motions, and putting the instinct into law, so that at the end of the day, this being your religious belief system, your religious certificate system, these are the highest laws. Nobody can expect you to follow a man's law if you're following your religious law. That's the science of going beyond the basic politics that most people get caught up in, Negro, black, and colored, you know, this country against that country, red versus blues. That's a game that you can play, and you can do well, and whatever, but you can also go beyond it, you can do what you want to do, you don't need to just go beyond it. And Grand Chief is religiously that office to represent that. Okay, so I'm going to present Grand Chief, let him present himself.
From the islands, at risk, etc. The proper name of these people is Marsh America, because their descendants are from Morocco, born in America. This matter is to be looked at with hopes of correcting it. Two, we seek to put an end to all inferior names, because possession of these inferior names classifies one as civilly dead for all abuses and mis-treatments that lawful citizens care to bestow upon them. Three, the objective of our organization is to help in the great program of uplifting fallen humanity, a national organization with a authoritarian complexion. Four, we seek to warn humanity of their sinful ways and inspire them to return to their foremothers and forefathers divine and national principles, that they will be jurisprudence survivors and receive their divine rights as citizens according to their free national constitution that was prepared for all free national beings. Five, we seek to keep our people, men, women, and children, away from negative scenarios involving peace officers, out of courts under defendant's capacity, and out of jails and prisons. Six, we seek to continue to facilitate social programs, such as prison initiatives and transitional programs for young and old to transition out of prison institutions and back into the balance of society peacefully and successfully. Seven, we seek to introduce Marsh Americans in Caymanland to the morals and principles of their ancient foremothers and forefathers. We are teaching their men, they must support their wives and children. Wives must honor their husbands and be foundations of the household. Sons and daughters must obey father and mother and be industrious and become part of uplifting fallen humanity. Eight, we seek to educate humanity with the reality that there is enough work for all to do to help build a better world. Nine, we seek to rally support from all loyal, faithful, active Marsh Americans, members and lawful citizens, to help us in our great work of uplifting fallen humanity. We ask all to help us morally and financially. Ten, the remedy of truth is the cure for religious controversy. We seek to foster the teachings of Yahshua, Jesus, Muhammad, Buddha, Confucius, Ali, and all divine prophets. Eleven, we seek to teach our people that though we must be proud of our religion Islamism handed on to us by ancient foremothers and forefathers, we must never use our doctrines to practice segregation. Twelve, we seek to teach our people that success is earned not given. After the example of our prophet Mubujwali, we must labor day and night in public and private for the good of humanity. Thirteen, we seek to teach our people to denounce anything that deludes to the institution of slavery. This includes being late to engagements, appointments, meetings, or occasions. Punctuality is a trait of the noble, upright, fearless, and independent Moors that have love for their people through the guidance of their Father God Allah. Fourteen, we seek to teach our people that there is only one sole foundation for the salvation of our people and it comes only through the connection to the Moors Divine and National Movement of the World founded by Prophet Mubujwali. Fifteen, it is earnestly hoped that the Moors Divine and National Movement of North America, the Moors Holy Temple of Science of the World, and the Moors Science Temple of America is not to be compared to any back-to-African movement. Sixteen, we seek to remind our people that without understanding, they are fallen from the true light onto the utter darkness of sin. And there is not a nation on earth today that will recognize them socially, religiously, politically, or economically, etc. in their present condition of their uncivilized undertaking in which they themselves try to force upon civilized world. So that's the position, the aims, the goals that we have for ourselves and that we have for our members/six citizens. In 2011, um, we want to give also honors to all the active Moors, specifically the elders that have taken what Mubujwali has given to the people and, um, expanded on things and represented them to the people on a higher frequency. Because Mubujwali came in 1913, teaching what he was teaching to the Asians of North America. And we can see that things have drastically changed from 1913 to now, right? Um, so, one of, um, one of the groups of Moors, the Great Seal National Association of Marsh Affairs, has taken, um, the reins in making sure that the world at large knows about the Moors and knows about the Moors in the right context and knows about the Moors from the perspective of we're all one people. There's not one individual that we uphold as the all and the all, right? This includes all of us. All of our input is needed in order for us to be successful in this. If you don't give input, don't expect to benefit from the privileges that this gives you. Because this is really yours. So in 2011, some Moors out of the Great Seal Association of Marsh Affairs sent a document called Public Notice to all public servants, governors, etc. And it was sent to the United Nations High Commissioner, Kelly Wilson, International Justice Court, the Hague, Honorable Barack Obama, White House, Washington DC, United States Justice Department, United States Attorney General, Eric Coleman, US Department of Transportation, Secretary of Railway, HUH, International Criminal Court, Louis Moreno Ocampo, the Hague, Netherlands, Great Seal National Association of Marsh Affairs, Minister Amira L., Interpol, France, United States Department of State, Hillary Clinton. And I'm just gonna read a couple excerpts of this so that you can see what Moors that you might not know about have done through your life. Like, this is already things that have been done. There's nothing that you have to learn new, right? "Greetings from the Moors Nation. As you are aware, the Moors of Northwest Omezzo are Aboriginal indigenous to this land as affirmed in the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of 1787 to 1836, recorded in the Congressional Records of the United States of America and its many entrees. As such, the United States of America and all entrees, agents, agencies, registered corporations, contractors, et al., are all obligated to the United States Republic Constitution, Treaty of Peace and Friendship of 1787, 1836, and all contracts and engagements entered into before the adoption of the United States Republic Constitution as affirmed in Article VI. As Moors American nationals, due sign this, we are protected under international law, the United States Republic Constitution, the Treaty of Peace and Friendship 1787 to 1836, and the Zodiac Constitution. The treaty in no way gave any land, as the land and the resources is and are the inheritance of the people and is and are unalienable and inalienable. It can never be stolen by one or all. It cannot be contracted, it cannot be transferred, it cannot be obtained by intermarriage or interbreeding. As the Moors of Northwest Omezzo, North America, and Northgate are not under or a part of the foreign United States of America private foreign corporation created on paper as distinguished of the land and its entrees as affirmed in the United States Republic Constitution preamble, as well as Article I, Section 8+17, we Moors American nationals are not and cannot be held to any codes, ordinances, executive orders, statutes, etc. by foreign United States of America and its entrees, which is foreign to all Moors American nationals and foreign to the United States Republic Constitution, which the Moors of America give honor and respect. If any of the people who identify themselves as Moors American nationals are approached, confronted, kidnapped, held hostage, and any liberties impaired as disclosed by Moors American nationals, the following charges will be placed on the individual as well as the corporate entity representing the individual. $250,000 payable in lawful money for the Pointage Act of April 12, 1792, for violation of liberty, per date until cured. These charges are in accordance with Title 18, Section 241 and 242. These charges will be credited to you, your bond, within 24 hours of notification of the incident. We reserve the right to negotiate for equitable compensation to be determined by the injured party. Notice the principle is notice the agent, notice the agent is notice the principle. Sincerely and without malice, I declare under the Zodiac Constitution and the United States Republic Constitution that the above is true and correct to the best of my knowledge and honorable intent." That was 2011. 2012, the two foreign corporate entities, Canada and the United States, officially signed on to all the United Nations documents that they didn't sign on to under previous individuals for past years. Which means that they acknowledged the position that the Moors are taking. Why? Because this was sent directly to Barack Obama, which is why he signed it. Prior to this, since 2010, 2011, our activity as Moors Americans in the jurisdiction of Ontario, we've been putting the so-called heads of the Canadian government on notice of our position. And in 2013, we made an official declaration on behalf of the Moors to let them know that sadly we acknowledge that you signed on to the documents. Now, this is our position. This is why Brother Kenway could go to court and tell people there that they have this to come to in order to free themselves from the shackles that they're under. Which is why Brother Heru can be acknowledged by the Washata. This is them acknowledging him. This is not him going to them begging them to acknowledge him as a representative of Canada. This is him being a Moors American here and them acknowledging that position and giving him his dues to be a representative of Washata for you here. Which, keep in mind that Mubujwali is Cherokee, which is Omeck, which is Washata. So there's no separation of, you know, the Washata Moors and then the Moors Science Temple Moors. It's all one body of Moors, just different tribes. Because of the activity that's already been done, the, um, Canada Border Agency stopped Brother Amari using a passport and acknowledged him as Amari Al-Bay. Aren't you a member of Moors Science Temple or whatever? This, he had a passport, mind you. They didn't call him by that name. They called him by his free national name. Which should inspire people to let you know that they know us. All the work that we've been doing out here is having an impact. And these people are recognized. Yes, there's definitely situations where we're gonna have to deal with them, right? Yes, there's definitely situations where because of us exercising our rights, we are gonna get, you know, mistreated, violated, or whatever. But I guarantee you that it's not because we're wrong. It's only to deter other people from getting on with this. And the only reason that they can do that or have the power to do that is because the people aren't putting this out there the way that they're supposed to put it out. We already do so much. But the obligation is on everybody that knows about their birthright to tell others about their birthright. Because there's nothing else. We see that brothers and sisters, sister just the other day, getting arrested, she's pregnant, they got her on her stomach, knee to her back. Why? Because she classified herself as African-American, African-whatever, black, negro, colored, whatever. So you're gonna get violated because those are property titles. It's just that simple, right? Another individual, our chef. We're gonna get him to talk to him on, you know, what he's doing, right? Having issues with these same individuals, same people out here, right? What does he do? He's not crying, go get a lawyer, all that stuff. Put the people on blast, make videos, put their names out there. He had a situation where he got violated on camera. The people who had the videotape were like, "We're not giving you nothing because the police have to get this first." Okay, no problem. Put their company name on there, put their head of whoever said that they can't get whatever on there, put that on YouTube, three days later DVD in the mail of the stuff. The same stuff that they said that they weren't gonna give us. Why'd they do that? Because they know something. They already know what's up. We're the only ones that are oblivious to what's going on. We're the only ones. Our people are the only ones that are in the dark. Which is why everybody calls them black people. So they're in darkness. So, I'm gonna sit down. One, um, once again, thank everybody for being here. We appreciate everybody taking the time out of their busy schedule to attend the first Tom Hall meeting. Um, I'm sure Brother Tezah has some other things that we're gonna go through. But, um, thank you for your time, peace and love.
Thank you, Ben Chee. Uh, so this time, I'm just gonna make a couple last announcements. Last but not least, one is that there's a Caymanland post website set up for anything rich, um, official, legitimate, that you want to put in a public sphere, okay? It's the same as you would, you know, send something to the newspaper, Trump star, whatever. And once it's in there, it's official. Or when you send it to the so-called court, whatever. If it's online, it's published, it's official. If it's official, it's anything else, I've lost. And so with our own website, we have control over that. And I'll send that out. Amari probably sent that out to the email list. So if you're not on the email list, make sure you get on the email list. Get an email to Brother Amari. The... And yeah, and then one other thing is if we could just get everybody to state their name and nationality. I'll start with myself. Once again, for anybody who wasn't here, we missed. I'm Tezah Assar Bay, I'm Moors American. And we'll just start with this brother right here.
I'm Cyrus Ricardo LB, I'm Moors American.
Okay.
I'm Jekin Shatinchikar LB, I'm Moors American.
She's an American.
Okay, so. So, I have to learn.
Okay.
And knowledge of learning today, quite a bit.
That's the best place to be. Better than being, you know, supreme ruler of everything, Moors learning and not learning. Okay? Let's keep learning, never stop, right? Sister?
I'm Shawna Luzy, I'm a Victoria friend and associate of Moors American.
I'm Nina Elbe, I'm Moors American.
Okay.
What momma said.
Yeah.
Listen to your momma. Brother? Skip?
I'm Akil.
I'm Amari.
I'm Moors American.
It's wow. Captain Eno King James LB, Moors American.
It's wow.
I'm Shikol Bay, I'm Moors American.
General Tad Albe, Moors American.
It's wow, wow. You're more a fan of LB? Not LB, not Bay, just LB. That was Moors American.
First I'd like to say, just.
Okay, thanks for coming.
God America, I'm Moors American.
It's wow.
Cheers to Luma from Ohio LB, Moors American.
Beautiful.
Mary Sue Jay, Moors American.
It's wow.
Natalie, looking to the D, Moors American.
It's wow.
Is that a date?
It's wow. Anybody we missed?
That?
That.
I'm Alex Terri, this is Sarah Salvi, I'm Salvi, I'm myself. Um, Mark Martin LB.
So. I'm Amari.
Again?
Yeah. Uh, yeah, so anybody, everything that's anybody come.
So. Amari Sis Beo Bay, Moors American.
I'm Rod LB, Moors American.
Kudra Al, Moors American.
Umar Churit LB, Moors American.
Rumi Ki LB, Moors American.
Napra LB, I'm African-American.
Ti LB, Moors American.
Yasun Kofi Samaka LB, Moors American.
It's wow. Thank you guys for participating. Um, you know, this has to be live where y'all are always getting to feel each other more and more. They're always building more of a relationship every time, every time you do. And so, Sister, me and Albe, I'm correct.
For, um, for Sister Nina, I just want to also put on the record the website so you can download the, uh, letter I would send to all the so-called international heads of state in 2011. The website is moorsnationspublicrecords.com. So you can go on that site, download the document, and have it on your possessions, being that you are Moors American.
It's wow. I'm gonna send that, I was sending it to the website. It's, um, I mean, I have the website, but, uh, that same website is gonna be a similar thing. And you can get in touch with those Moors around that website and get these posted as well. And that's for different audience or whatever, society as well, right? But it's the same, same website.
Moors Nation Public Records dot com.
And so now the part where that's gonna be more of what every other general meeting is gonna be like. Going forward, then you, membership, presenting your thoughts, your ideas, your issues. And then all of us together dealing with those issues, right? And trying to use this as a guideline, okay? Brother Taj Trigley put this up. So for those of you who know Taj, you know why we're using his literature. If you don't know. So, so that's it, Sister, yeah.
I have two things on the agenda today. Um, first thing I want to speak about, um, is the introduction to Moors Science. We have some program that was built together for children aged seven to 10. It's a test run, it's the first, um, program. So capacity is 10, 10 children. Um, so we have eleven hour half, four weeks, on Wednesdays. Starts in June, July is at age one plus.
We also have a long flag in the back of the wall.
Yeah, and a poster here. So right here, this is the education lesson pack. So you guys can hopefully see exactly what I'm gonna be covering in every week. It's gonna have $15 a day for each child. That's gonna cover the materials that we're gonna be making. We're gonna get them to get the access so they can learn what a product is, who the product of Mubujwali is, what is, what's going in this class, what's best, you know, like colored, what is the black. What I'm gonna, what we're gonna have them do is make the flags. We're gonna make things, we're gonna get up there and be the star, like, we're gonna really get them involved, right? So, wanna do this? I'm a little bit nervous about it. So the registration website, registering website is called moorsnationsprogram2015.blogspot.ca. So if you guys are interested or if you can go there and register your child, I'm sure we're gonna have a lot more and ten registry, where you have the registry. And at the end, we just have a little, that's the case. And maybe most of these are gonna let over, you're gonna be only a simple. The class likes to help for nation to help. Um, this is, uh, example of registration, mostly online. It's quite simple. And then after that, I'll contact you. If you're interested and you wanna pay the $15, you can all go into that story at the classroom. And we'll be there in a minute, so we're gonna get to study. Now, the second thing on the agenda.
Sister, sorry, I have to go. Um, you said it's a four, four minutes, right? One, one, one minute?
One day, yeah, one day, six hours total, right? So the beginning is gonna be prayer, introduction, children, the application. So we have about 15 minutes, get settled, jump in. And we have the last 15 minutes to kind of just what to learn today, go over that, and do a large prayer and go back.
What if, I already saw it, what if parents wanna stop here, sit here?
Um, as you can see up line in the lesson plan, there. Parents are more than welcome to stay in the class, however, no instructions. So you guys can help with the back of the class, so the children can have the structure. And we get them to build relationships together and build that atmosphere. So you gotta make the question, leave, contact, come, come, come to it, and they'll be fine. One more thing, we're gonna do it up. I think this is the perfect time to bring this to the Moors community. Um, when I was 18 years old, I met a process. Um, I've been working on it for many, 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 many years. I have the US patents, I have a patent for it. I have a search done for it. Everything's legitimate, everything's done. I have marketing research, the suburbs can project, and should be very good for it. Um, anyone that has viewed this has actually signed a confidentiality agreement. So me bringing this to the nation is a big deal. Because it was telling me that this could be a tool that we can use as a nation to build, build on, to get ourselves somewhere, to uplift us as humanity, you know, to call humanity. So I'm gonna leave a copy of this. I'm gonna entrust them with a copy of this. So if anyone's actually really interested, sit down and see how can we take this, produce this, make this, because I can do something, to be honest, to do something. But I'm bringing this to the nation, so I don't wanna do this for myself. I'm not, as he said, it's not about winning. It's about us uplifting each other and getting somewhere. And this is good, this is the things I've staffed with marketers around the world that are willing to take this for me and run with it. I just happen to be like, so. Because I don't want myself out there with just any, I don't want us to benefit from it all. Well, my good benefit from it, right?
Do you have something to add, LB?
Absolutely, you guys can have a lot. I'm hoping it's safe, but you guys can have a look at that as well. It's a fitting assembly, fitting spoon assembly. Um, but it can be used, if you use for older people, children, or disabled people, eliminates the use of just a spoon, a cup, or a plate. So when a child is at that developing stage where they're transformed, they're transformed from using a bottle to actually using a spoon, this device comes to play to help them bridge that gap. Also, the device helps to build your... Also, the device helps to build a relationship between a parent and a child, stepfather, to help a big child without having to have. When a child gets in a stage and starts hitting things off and hitting plates off the table, this kind of, um, eliminates the cleanup and gives them the chance to, to use the device without having to go into the mashed food. It's only used for mashed foods. It's not for no breads and potatoes or anything, right? And they're just able, they're just able to eat, because I worked in an old people's home when I was fifteen years old, and I saw, I had to feed them the mashed food. Some of them can't feed themselves and can't even eat this food. So with all of this stuff that came together, and I had my, my child, and I was around my, um, I didn't have my son, but I had my, um, my god, my god child at the time. So when I was seeing how she was growing and I was working at this home, and all of this, and I said, you know what? I think we need to have a device that eliminate this, because I remember seeing the old, the man was like, this is trying to feed himself with this. So when I'm thinking, he's probably thinking to himself, oh my god, I can't even do that. He felt, he felt, I know he felt weird, because we were having a conversation after, he was telling me about his life, and, uh, look at me, he was a bit depressed, right? So I said, I wanna create something to kind of give them back a bit of self-worth, so that they don't have to feel like I'm the pen and the pen leader all the time, and he's not getting so bothered when he has to clean up after them. So, I mean, again, if someone's real business minded, because only true business minded people that have been really in, like, um, will fully, fully, um, understand what's going on in these documents. However, if you're interested in getting to know more about business, get in touch with these guys. And I'm gonna give them a chance to go through this, and maybe they'll be guys who are active. Um, I'm not looking for finance from anybody, that's not what this is, as I said, this is on my own. I just want to come together as a nation to put a, let's say, a business plan together to see how we're gonna take this and turn this from just a dream via to something productive. And all the other information in here is free, by the tax of. And this one you guys.
There you go, it's lots of.
That's why I'm right here.
Islam.
Yes.
So, that's, and that's the power, right, is that if we come together, if we build trust, then that trust is, is free, right? It's not going to the bank and, oh, you wanna trust account, and then they charge you a fee, and, you know what I mean? They only trust you as far as they can calculate your work, you only trust them as far as their advertisements and their commercials, and it's a inefficient way of doing business, but it, it gives certain guarantees for strangers to interact, right? It's to go beyond that thing that we're strangers, we're not strangers, right? So Sister just giving us, presented something that's powerful, right? As well, she's offering up her time and her energies for the school. And like I said, it'd be ridiculous to deny that, but the temple is your temple. Let's just go through the Brian Run. Everybody have their, their book out?
Yeah.
We'll go into question and answer right after, right? We're just doing, doing the book, right? So what happens is, she made a motion, she made a proposal to have these classes in July, every Wednesday, hour and a half, right? So, well, whose family is it?
I was.
Okay, so can I tell her, yeah, I come through, just like that?
Sorry.
No, okay. So it says, members can present motions, second motions, debate motions, vote on them, okay? How do I present a motion? One, obtain the floor. Wait until the last speaker is finished, rise and address the chair. Say, Mr. Chairperson, or Madam Chairperson, or Mr. President, give your name, the chair will recognize you by repeating it, okay? So Sister Amina came forward, I said Sister Amina, right? She made her motion. Number two, make your motion. Speak clearly and concisely. State your motion affirmatively, say, "I lose that lead," instead of, "I lose that lead not." Avoid personalities and stay on the subject, rise and address the chair, say, "Mr. Chairperson, Madam Chairperson, give your name, the chair will recognize you by repeating it, okay? Uh, so that's the formality that will, that will go through. Number three, wait for a second. Another one, member will say, "Second, I second the motion," or the chair will call for a second. If there's no second, your motion will not be considered. So let's take it forward and, um, go through as if we're starting at that number three, okay? So Sister Amina has made a motion that in July, we'll be conducting, the temple will be used for its classes. Is there a second?
I said, go ahead.
There's a second, okay? Since there's a second, it is moved and seconded that we have classes for the youth, hour and a half, on Wednesday, Sister Amina suggested according to her program, okay? Um, that means now the motion is assembly proper, okay? That's part four. Chair states the motion, the chairperson must say, "It is moved and seconded that we, after this happens, debate or voting can occur. Your motion is now assembly proper, and you can't change it without consent of the members." Okay, Sister Amina?
Yes.
Alright. Five, expand your motion. Move where is allowed to speak first. Direct all comments to the chairman. Keep to the time limit for speaking. You may speak again after all other speakers have finished. You may speak a third time by motion to suspend the rules with a two-third vote, okay? So if there is anything you wanna add to what you said, Sister Amina, you can do that. So you, you pretty much set up what you're gonna use, you, uh, you put your proposal forward, okay? So number six is putting the question, uh, which is the last, last step, obviously, right? In other words, we're gonna vote now. So put in the question. The chairperson asks, "Are you ready for the question?" If there is no more discussion, the vote is taken, the chairperson announces the results. Or motion for previous question may, may be adopted, okay? So now I'm gonna put the question, right? In other words, um, I'm gonna ask for a vote, and we'll vote by eyes and hands, okay? Eye means yes, you agree, hand means you don't agree, okay? So, are you ready for the question?
I am.
Okay. Um, for all those in favor of having a summer Moorish Science Program, or Sister Amina's program, um, say aye, all those against, say nay. Um, for the program, aye.
Aye.
Against the program? Okay, the ayes have it, we'll get some program of Moorish Science Temple, one, five, three, eight, and everything I do. Thank you, guys, alright? And this is, this is, it's, it's really basic, it's very simple, it's common sense, right? In other words, this is the way that we lived before St. Patrick Muhammad, peace be upon him, came, right? And showed people who needed him, when we didn't really need anybody to show us, right? And we came after and realized, oh, this dude brought some unsilized people and showed them how to conduct themselves. Okay, well, we'll, you know, build those people, and then go into Europe and build, and build things there and civilize those people too, right? And so because it's based on common sense, we didn't need anybody to tell us. Okay, let's all do things that we all agree on. And if we have arguments or contention, let's discuss it, symbolize, right? And so this is just, like I said, it's a guide, and we use this because Brother Taj is our brother, and like I said, that's a prophet brother right there, okay? He knows the stuff. Um, so that being said, that's actually, that's official temple, um, history, okay? Right now. So that's our first motion that's been passed, okay? Give thanks, Islam, to you all, thank you for coming. Um, we're gonna, I'm gonna get Brother Landry to come up and present himself, if he's ready. Yeah?
This is our, uh, then you sit down here, we can do this. Um, like, she, uh, Vans, she told you, I saw the chef along with, um, kids that are not here, but we, uh, do the food for the, for the event that we have. And also, I do film and photography, and I'm also, I just became an author, uh, some of you, some of you guys might know. Islam. And I've got a book, I've twenty-seven layers, the, uh, the book is based on this, I wrote my daughter a lot of certain back sentences, trying to get to the movement, and, uh, I've been out for five years, and since then, I've got to the movement. You know, praise Allah, my man, uh, brought me to this, to the moon and I'm out with, uh, Grant Chee, and ever since then, just been history. Now, like the G S told you, I could go on twelve-six studio on YouTube, write this down, one, two, oh-six studio, or one word, or YouTube. Any, any video you see, you can read my friends on, click on it, and get some info on the, um, my rights to travel and what I'm going through in regards to the fact of, and, uh, but, uh, my experience has been beautiful, and up till coming, coming into the knowledge, I was just mainly into the, like, school of thoughts, you know, on, on a spiritual level. I was developing as, as I could under the religious ban and, you know, the new cap that was put on as far as the school of thought, you know, like, my, I, for my mom, I came from a, as Christians, or whatever. So and then, you know, when I came, when I came to this side of the world, because I was in, I had a manifest in a place by Nigeria. So when we forwarded to this part of the world, they put it, added this poor Catholicism to me, even changed my name to Anthony, because they said, no, I need to go to Catholic school, I have to change my name, boy, that's what I told my parents, I'm only ten, you know, my creed. So for, for, for years, even that alone, going around, what I made was a dishonor to my name, Landry, which was given to me by my grandma. And that was the only actually grandparent that I ever knew, which is ironic, our grandparents passed away, although they manifested. So for, from the age of ten till I came to the, I got to the knowledge, I was born by this name. And it kind of made sense with all the struggles I faced, even under the black, call myself black, I'm in a little black color. So I understood everything when, when everything was presented to me, as far as the name, you call yourself, nationality, the meat, everything. You know what I mean? It's been said, it's not what people call you, it's what you ask, and that is so key.
Islam.
That is so key, you know, and I don't wanna get too much deep into it, like I said. Twelve-six studio, YouTube it, find out more info. And, uh, when you guys are ready, I got five bucks, I'll play a food.
I'm ready.
My book is out here for twenty bucks, you know what I mean? Thanks for having me.